All right, once again, everybody, welcome back to the Green Bay City Council Nonpartisan Debates hosted by the Green Bay Lama. I'm Gary Brown-Broadway. It's time for District Two with Jim Hutchison. We did send an invitation to Andy Nicholson, however, we did not hear back from Andy Nicholson, so we're going to proceed with Jim Hutchison from District Two. Once again, community advocate Rhonda Sitnikau and Pastor Jerry Vayner from Samaritan's Heart Ministries with the City Council Debates.
Welcome back to the Green Bay City Council Nonpartisan Candidate Forum, and we are joined now by District Two candidate Jim Hutchison. Hutchison, I have to say that right? First-time candidate running against Andy Nicholson, who did decline our invitation for the forum. We will begin with an opportunity for you to share an opening statement.
Thank you very much. I'd like to begin by thanking the Greater Green Bay Society of the Lama for this opportunity. This is my first live discussion. I'm not a politician, I'm a civil engineer, so this is all new to me. So I appreciate the opportunity. And a little bit about myself, I've been a civil engineer for forty-three years. I've worked in Green Bay for the last thirty-five of those years. I was working on the Green Bay Fox River Cleanup for over twenty years. I wrote the first project manual, which is the bidding document used for the positive end, which was the very first dredging project in Little Shute in nineteen ninety-eight, nineteen ninety-nine. So I've been working this river, and I've been a part of every dredging project since, all the way through a year or so. That's why I'm interested in the city of Green Bay. I've helped develop that river into a way cleaner state than it's ever been. My father was always one to give back to the community. He stood on the school boards, and he was a member of Rotary, and it goes back to his father. So it's been in my family. My daughter-in-law is a man of choice, she's a county supervisor. And lo and behold, she's running against Andy Nicholson for the county. So we have two in our family running against Andy Nicholson. So again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I guess let the questions begin.
Well, let's do that then. Same questions that we have Bart Dorr, however, I'm just going to shuffle the deck a little bit in the interest of making things just a little more varied. So we will start with the public safety question this time. Police Chief Davis recently said, and I'll paraphrase the quote, "I have to be very careful, but I do not over-say the problem that we have with gun violence, because sometimes people in my position, police chief, they'd be tempted to do so to encourage more resources for the police department," Davis said. "I'm not going to do that. I want to make sure we are all talking about the same problem we actually have." In your estimation, what is the gun violence problem Green Bay actually has?
Well, gun violence is important. It is kind of confusing to me as someone who's running for first time, where are we really at in terms of gun violence? Because I read a complete story about, the headline was "Gun Violence Was Big in Green Bay Last Night", I forget what it was. And the story was guns going off, but no one was hurt. So I thought, well, where's the violence? The guns are going off. That's a pretty violent thing, but it's not hitting anyone? So I was confused. So I think there's a lot more guns going off than guns going off and hitting someone. Anytime that happens, that's extremely important, you've got to investigate it. But if you go by just the number of guns going off, and I think that's what the police chief was getting at, we've got an issue of guns going off, which is different than guns going off and hurting someone. I mean, in a sense. So I think it's important, because do we send a lot of money to find out where those guns are being fired? Or if we know that group of people who typically are doing that, do we investigate them? In old-fashioned means, without the annual update that would be associated with going to a mechanical or sound assessing equipment system? So I think it plays an important part there.
Next question is, what role can the city council play in establishing affordable and accessible housing?
Okay, I got to listen to Bart Dorr's answer. So I'm new to this, and the fact that there are grants that can be applied for, and applying for developments by developers is a way. I think one of the best ways, though, is to make sure the infrastructure that developers can put into is in place and is proven that will exist for another twenty-five, thirty years. If you have systems that are getting behind, and are not designed for long enough tenure, you're going to have issues. And you're going to have issues if you develop in areas that don't have the capacity, because then you're going to have to build more. I'm a civil engineer, and this is what I live, breathe. So I think the best thing to do is to have areas that are ripe for development, that a developer can see, and it's not in a flood zone, and it's got utilities, then they'll come and they'll build. And there is a need to have higher-class properties and medium and lower-class properties in the sense that I think there is a shortage of housing, which is driving the cost of annual payments for rent or for houses if you're buying it outright. So I think we have to make sure we have those areas available for development, or redevelop those areas that can be redeveloped and exist downtown.
Are you satisfied with the current road condition progress that is improving the city streets of Green Bay? If not, what are your ideas to improve the rate of road improvement?
Okay, that's a really great question, because I've been going indoors the last four weeks. I had the primary, so I had to hurry up and learn how to do doors quickly. And what people are saying is, there's some roads in District Two on the far east side, Alpine, Moon Valley, they're actually dangerous to drive a bike, like Moon Valley. So there is a need to do construction. And I noticed that a lot of these locations are where buses drive. Buses, eight buses worth about, I don't know what the actual number is, five hundred to a thousand cars. I mean, that's, the heavier the wheel load, the more that vehicle contributes to the stress in payment and subway. So I think there has to be a look at where are these bus routes, where are potential bus routes? Make sure the roads are built for that, and then put money, if we're going to put money here, put it where that's going to be. I don't think the rate is fast enough currently. I think we have to do more. There's too many roads that need to be reconstructed. So I'm looking at that five percent wheel tax, if elected, and I'll be pushing to use that as soon as we can.
All right.
And then that come back. Okay, we know from data collected by nonprofits, around twenty-six hundred people, singles, families, and unaccompanied youth, used an area agency last year because they were experiencing homelessness. It's important to note, this number doesn't include individuals who are experiencing homelessness that are living in cars, storages, couches, et cetera. Has the city done enough to support these individuals? How can you, as a council member, work to improve this situation?
Okay, I know there are entities that are working directly with the homeless. These are the people who are not living in homes right now. St. John's, as mentioned, others at the county level, the city level. I think this is an area level, meaning not only Brown County, but the surrounding counties, because it's not only Brown County, it's the surrounding counties. People are in need of housing, period. So the way to address it is make housing available, that's the easy answer, but how do you do that? I think the city has to investigate and get grants to allow developers to come in and do these. Also, there are a number of existing buildings that are probably on the, you know, within the downtown area, surrounding areas, that could be developed into multi-units. Of course, it has to be okayed by the surrounding neighborhoods, but there's already existing surrounding neighborhoods that have these units. And it's going to take a citywide approval of the constituents in the area, of the county council, of the county, and all these entities working together. I think there's got to be something that's balanced area-wide, directly, is directly trying to address this issue. It can't be just out there and everyone's addressing it differently.
Can I ask a follow-up on your answer? So when you say something specific, are you thinking of an area where there would be, specifically for people who are in this situation? Or can you just clarify, when you speak to that, what are you speaking to?
Well, I'm speaking to like Brown County and the surrounding counties, say, every county that touches Brown County. That's what I'm thinking about. Because what may happen is if A county or A city gets a really good idea and they commit it, and they develop these things, there's going to probably be a rush to that specific location. If that's occurring across a greater area, then there won't be a rush to that area. It'll be to the other areas in the area. That was my answer.
Thank you.
Our next question, something of an inside baseball question, the operating parameters of city council and the local governments. Do you believe that the ability given to local governments, including the city council, that the state's open meeting law to go into closed session is too great, too small, or just about right? In other words, the ability that law considers to go into closed session, is it excessive? Is it not enough, or is it just right?
Okay, again, I listened to Bart Dorr's answer, and she, I think, believe I don't want to mistake that it's near, it's on. And my answer is, I don't know. I'm not part of county council yet. But I do know the benefit of going into closed session is to negotiate with developers, with individuals, with legal, to determine what the best route to go is in this situation, between, say, the city attorney, or say, if there's a consultant attorney, or whatever. There is a need to go into closed session. The thing is, you can't, it should be a specific need, and it should be lawful. And I know there are some gray area words, and it shouldn't be used way too much, because the public should be exposed to what's being negotiated as much as possible. But having been one who bids, say, contracts, it's a good idea not to have all the cards on the table, so that potential contractors can see what's being discussed. So, I mean, there's a benefit to that.
And a quick follow-up on that. And Bart Dorr said she did not see this as a problem, her experience as Green Bay City Council. Would you like to see city council tighten up the default operating in closed session? In other words, if they say it's a personnel matter, it's a personnel matter. And I have spoken to elected officials, and said they've been in closed sessions, they didn't think should be closed sessions, once they got into the herd of the matter. So your response to that is to default?
I think if you're going into closed session, there should be a specific reason you're doing it. It should be clearly specific and spelled out, so anyone who reads what the reason is can compare it to the law and see if it's right.
Do you believe that your race has been impacted by partisanship? Also, can you give some pros or cons to political parties involving themselves in local nonpartisan government work?
Two great questions. It is a nonpartisan position. I have been knocking on doors, and we have dozens of questions asked, and I can say truthfully on both sides to this issue. Are you conservative? Are you liberal? What are you? I'm going to say, well, I'm nonpartisan, I want to work for, you know, District Two and the city of Green Bay. And so then I get hit with, well, you're on the fence, so you're going to get hit from both sides. And I go, I don't view it that way. And I've had discussions with these people, and by the end of the discussion, I think they get where I'm coming from. On some issues, I may totally do something that would be considered conservative. On another issue, I might totally vote for something that would be considered liberal. But I'm looking at the best for District Two and the city of Green Bay. And I virtually really believe in that. So that's where I sit, and I'll sit, if I get elected, I'll be sitting that way all the way through.
So to follow up, the second part of the question asks, pros and cons to political parties involving themselves. So the question related to the parties themselves involving themselves in local nonpartisan government work, whether it be races, whether it be issues that are on the table. What are your thoughts on pros and cons with that?
Well, the pros and cons, the different parties have money. And I've been approached by parties, and I've said, no, I'm not going to accept any money or in-kind donations. So, but they can't get their word out for you if you want it. Literally, for this, for this job, I consider this almost a full-time job. I don't see the value of a party system in this job. I have accepted donations from both progressive individuals and conservative individuals. And after I talked to both entities, both number of entities, for, you know, like twenty minutes, forty-five minutes, in one case, about two hours, and they've given me money, those individuals, from both sides of the spectrum. So there, there was no requirement or session. So the value I see for the parties in this job is heavily missed.
Our next question deals with the national issue of inflation, but obviously impacting the local level, the worst since some forty years. With that in mind, how will you, as an individual, alter approach the city budget to protect taxpayers during this tough and uncertain financial times?
Well, that's a good one, because inflation affects everything. It affects our ability to pay taxes. It affects what projects will cost. It affects the, you know, cost of a unit foot of pipe that you're going to buy for a sewer. It goes across the board. So what it's calling out for, and why I'm running, is we have to make good decisions on the projects we choose to do and what they're going to accomplish. I know I design sanitary storm sewers, water rings, I design robes. I know what the design parameters are, and the biggest one that's hitting with inflation is storm sewer, the runoff of surface to going to the storm sewer is immense. And so we have to make very smart decisions now on what we're going to do. We can't get along with pushing it down, you know, down the road, sorry for the pun, anymore. We just simply can't. We've got to, we've got to make some really key, important decisions where we may spend money now that saves us tons of money in five or ten years.
What can the city do to incentivize economic development?
Boy, I wish I knew the answer to that one, because that, the rebranding came up. That's a small step. I'm all in favor of rebranding Green Bay. I know, you know, what's the cost of that? I don't know. I say maybe we, I mean, this first little step. Because what I see in Green Bay, having worked on it, is the Fox River being one heck of a jewel to use to bring people in. People might laugh, because thirty years ago, you could smell the river before you got within two blocks of it. That's on. The water quality is better now than it's been for, I don't know. I'm going to pull this number out of my back pocket, but I say sixty, seventy, eighty years. It's, the chemicals are ninety percent, the sources are ninety percent gone. And if they're still there, they're probably covered under a cap or a cover. So the little bugs aren't eating them anymore, the little bugs aren't getting eaten by the fish anymore. Bottom line is, people are going to be able to keep the fish and eat them shortly. I don't know when that's going to be, but it's coming. We've got one of the best fisheries in the world here. So the fish, people know about this place. I want the voter people to know about this place. I want the people who rap and canoe and go out and do all this stuff to know about this place. When they're, when they're coming up to this area, they're coming to Green Bay, of course. I said this before the legal women voters. I want them to come to Green Bay, that's their target place, before they go to Door County, before they go to the Packers Stadium. They're coming to downtown Green Bay. That's my vision. So I think if we can pull that off, we will get invested.
Question about elections, it's a two-part, I'll ask them at a time. Would you allow a third-party entity, again, to be involved in the election process after the 2020 experience? Why or why not?
I need to understand this question. Is it because the third-party involvement was called the root of the problem this last election?
Well, it just raises questions on the necessity for it and the danger of influence of an outside group having an impact on the operation of elections.
Okay. Well, I think the third party unfortunately was, it happened during an election that has been proven to be totally honest and open. Everything that exists today in terms of arguments, our hearsay, and things that people thought happened, the people who are looking into this election are the ones who are highly motivated to find something wrong. And what have they found? I have Brad Gableman's list, hoping to see something there. And there's not a lot there that they hadn't said beforehand. Is it appropriate for a third party to be there? I don't know. If it would ease people's minds that it's more honest, then yeah, let's not have a third party there. And hopefully, we could have an election without COVID and all that good stuff. But at the same time, I think if something's found that should be brought up in terms of election fraud, it should be displayed, and things found to correct it. But I don't think that's happening.
So follow-up, do you believe oversight of city elections as it existed at it, and if a Green Bay resident told you they were concerned about the integrity of local elections, how would you answer them?
I think there are, I guess, Republican and Democrat observers. They should be asked what their observations were. I've talked with coworkers, and I don't even know what their party affiliations were. And they said, it's really hard to do something that's under the table, because every step you do, when it's counting ballots, or opening something, or unlocking something, there's at least two or three other people there, and you've got to yell at what you're doing, and you've got to, you know, it's all above board. So, and I think what we're here for, there should be observers at every step of the way. And I think the observers should be, you know, given pre-race and look at everything that's being done, and then after an election, immediately after, their feelings as to what just happened. What did you see, you know, right away before there's any spin that goes on? Thank you.
And I believe this is the last question. What role can the city council play in establishing affordable and accessible housing?
No, that's a new question? Okay. No, the other one was on...
Homelessness.
Yeah, homelessness, okay. Affordable housing, oh, man. Having been young and rented and fought to buy a house and maintain a house, it's tough. And I was an engineer, my wife is a teacher. It's tough if you don't have a job that pays a lot to get into something. And I think the city, what the city can do is observe what the status of the housing market is and get their pulse on what exactly is going on. How many housing units are available? What's the spread of the economy from low to high? Are we short in an area? And then if there is, is, because if you're short, then the price is going to be driven up because of lack of ability to purchase or rent. So I guess it would be, the city should make sure there's enough housing units for those looking for it. And if there isn't, then they should encourage development that starts with it.
So can I just press you a little bit on that? Because I think the big question out there right now is, how do we do that, right? So we know that there seems to be a lot of housing that is very hard for people to access and to pay for. So do you have any ideas of how the city could be facilitating more actual affordable housing for people that maybe can't even afford what's considered affordable? Is there anything that you think they could do and approve upon in that area?
Well, I think they could identify locations that would be acceptable for lower housing especially, because there's some areas that would become under fire from neighborhood constituents. There's some areas that may be prime for it. Number one is to identify those areas where that development can occur. And then potentially develop a TIF district. When I was Assistant City Engineer for the city of downtown, or for the city of West Bend back in the eighties, they created a TIF district for their downtown, because they redid all the street sewers and everything downtown, because they really needed it, everything was really old. And so what that enabled the business people to do is do it, and then just pay taxes at that rate that they had, even though the values went up, and they took that extra money and put it back into the downtown area. The same thing could be done for redeveloping areas that are existing and make units out of the multi-units to increase the number of units that are available for rent. And a TIF district, that's, I guess, an idea that could be done.
Okay, and this would be the time, if you have a closing statement that you could share?
Sure. Thanks again for this opportunity. I hope I didn't trip and fall too much. Civil engineers don't get it out very often. We're usually in a room by ourselves, just doing calculations, literally. But I'm looking forward to, if I am given the job to become an alder in District Two, I would much appreciate it. I look forward to working with those constituents in District Two, the constituents in the city of Green Bay, the alders, the mayor, the staff. One thing, I'm a big believer in allowing staff to do their professional jobs, policemen, firefighters, and the city staff. I'll support them, and I want to make Green Bay better and more able to deal with... I'll support them, and I want to make Green Bay better and more able to deal with the future. I really, really do. I'm going to retire in July, after forty-seven years as a professional civil engineer. I wanted to devote my time to this job, and I would ask people for your help. Thank you very much.
Very well said, Mr. Hudson, District Two. And also, Doug and Jerry for hosting News Two Late. We'll be back at 2:00 PM. For those of us who are watching live streaming right now, we'll be at 2:00 PM with special guests Chris Beard and Jesse Brunet. Be sure to join us then. Thank you.